Well, good morning. First of all, another beautiful morning. And we have had one beautiful morning right after the other. It gives me great joy. I won't say joy. I've been trying to use that word more and more to know that the Lord is not only in His heaven, but He is all around us and there's evidence of it everywhere we look, everywhere we go. Flowers blooming, birds singing, and you beautiful people that I have come to know and cherish dearly. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart over these four years that I've had an opportunity to serve as a member of the Board of Education. And I know beyond a shadow of doubt that our school system is in more than capable hands. And when my term does, I'm not going to say expire. When I have completed this particular term, I plan to be around in one way or another to do what I can for our children, public schools of Robson County students and you all as you do what you already do so capably. If we could, let's begin with a moment of prayer. Most gracious God, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to get up this morning. We thank you for allowing us to have clear minds. We thank you for allowing us to have a heart for our children, for our county, and for our world. We thank you for the part that each individual in this room and beyond has in bringing about what you would have to happen in this, our wonderful school system, the public schools of Robson County. We ask that you be with us in a special way as we consider matters that are essential to the successful operation of public schools of Robson County. Ask this in Jesus' name.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know on behalf of all the committee members and this district, thank you for your work and your leadership as our policy committee chairperson. This is critical, important work as it guides how we make decisions. So again, thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. If you have your policy manual with you, we will consider first the heading Rental Involvement and Engagement, Policy 1310-4002. And of course, it begins with a statement, a paragraph recognizing the important role of parents in education of their children. I'm not going to read all of that to you. Sure, you've already read it and it's straightforward. But it does emphasize critical and specific, and I will say specific, rental involvement. And I'm going to reference that with what is here in front of us has more clarity and more specificity, more specific than any document or statement of policies that I've had an opportunity to review or to attempt to be a part of implementing. And I credit, I know a number of people have had an part in this. And I realize we get this from the North Carolina School Board Association, but it's not entirely buoyed of our input as to what our specific school system needs. So it's a combination, a collaboration. And again, I've had an opportunity to observe and to be a part of this particular area that we're about to look at, and it is quite extensive.
Mr. Chair, before we move into the policy, can we ask Dr. Carr to update us where we are with this policy and then move into the policy? I think that would be helpful for all of us to hear.
Sure.
Dr. Carr's.
So as part, it's on. So for Parent Bill of Rights, we were required to put a parent guide together that has to be posted on the website. That includes information from all of our departments related to this policy, sharing information about how grades are produced, where resources are, all of those information. And that has been up on our website for about three months now. We will have to update that again in July 1, just with any updates. But currently, everything in there is up to date, but it involves all the departments putting information anywhere from nursing, telling what vaccinations are needed, into what requirements are so that parents can easily access anything that they need. So that is currently posted to our website and translated. And so we have taken all pieces of the policy and ensure that everything is linked in there for that.
Yes, sir. Pitch your mic.
After reviewing the policy and like you said, extensively studying it, it looks like it's very detailed. I see in red additions on page seven of 14 where low performing schools were added. And on page nine of 14, parents do not have the right to opt out of students' participation in academics. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this policy as recommended.
Okay, there's been a motion to accept the policy as presented regarding parent involvement, engagement. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And again, thank you, Dr. Carr, and everyone who had a part in putting this together. It is very comprehensive and thorough. We greatly appreciate that. Next topic is prohibition against retaliation. And this, of course, begins with stressing the conduct of not only board members, but all personnel who are a part of our system and even beyond. And it goes in some detail about conducting professional business in business affairs, carrying out state and local laws that are in place, that we are duty bound to follow, as well as our own policies and regulations. This page does point out some specific areas that can be. I'm not saying they are. This is not saying that either. But it does illustrate financial improprieties, ethical violations, other illegal practices. And intended employees who report such matters in good faith will not be subject to retaliation or adverse employment consequences. And it goes on to state what the board's responsibility is in this area. That as a board, we are expected to hold high standards and to abide by them. And when we become aware of impropriety or violation, actions that are not conducive and can't be illegal, as has been stated, that we address these in the proper fashion as a board. That is the way that I interpret this particular page. And it is one page that is devoted to this particular topic. And the last sentence is kind of adds an emphasis to what is expected when this type of reporting occurs. If necessary, school officials or the board may specify reasonable steps to protect the complaining employee from retaliation. That is, the employee that has brought the impropriety or wrongdoing to the attention of the correct personnel. So do I hear any further discussion on that particular topic?
Mr. Chairman, I am thankful that it did strike through unlawful, which really means that in most cases, we would have involved law enforcement. Using the language wrongdoing gives us an opportunity to do an investigation. And then from that internal, if we need to hand it over, we can take that action. So that's a positive, that strike through. And then the last line in the policy is that once you approve this policy, then we're going to ask HR to provide a copy to all of our employees that they will sign off on, that they have read and that they understand the policy.
Ms. Craig, you have a question? Okay. All right. There's been a motion made and a seconded that we, board, committee do, does accept this policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We move on to board member technology use. There is an extensive number of pages that address what is considered to be proper technology use by board members, responsible use. And it goes, of course, into some, quite a bit of detail about keeping information confidential and private and the way that our technology system is designed. We, as a board, are able to do that and are expected to do that and to prevent information that is supposed to be relevant and confidential to the Board of Education to stay in that particular realm and not be leaked out to the public in an improper way. Of course, you know, we always have the correct procedure and the correct channels to release that information. Jessica is our public relations officer, is well versed on that, does a great job with that. And she knows how to differentiate and she knows how to time, the correct timing when information is supposed to be released. And we've all been the beneficiaries of her great work since she's been a part of us. So I take this opportunity to thank you for that. I have a few things underlying. School system personnel may monitor online activities when the internet is accessed via a school system-owned device. And it is the, obviously, we have a technology department. And they are experts in monitoring all of the activity that is happening within the scope of our internet technology system within the public schools of Robson County. And they are able to, and Cole, feel free to chime in here and correct me or add to what I'm saying. But again, my perception, and I think the perception of all of us, is our technology department, again, is very thorough in monitoring internet activity and the exchange of information. And is able to pinpoint errors or intentional information that is erroneous and may undermine the mission of the public schools of Robson County. And again, I'd like to commend what our technology department does because I don't believe there's another one in the state that does any better job than our folks do. Do you have anything to add, Cole?
I'd just like to state that we do everything in our power to, of course, to protect the students and staff and employees of public schools of Robson County for security concerns out there because we all know cyber threats are real and are everyday thing. Phishing is a constant battle. And of course, protecting the students to make sure that they're only able to authorize appropriate content, whether they're at school or away from school as well, that we make every effort to ensure that staff and students are safe.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I may also, let's not miss the emphasis placed on the liability issue for board members to use their personal devices to conduct school business. You open yourselves up if that happens. So again, the policy makes that clear. Bobby, you want to add to that?
Yeah, so if you will look at the red on page four that has basically been added based on a legal suit, and I think it's Lincoln versus Freed, that as board members, if you maintain a social media platform, you are not allowed to delete comments on that platform if they are based, or if there are disagreements based on your beliefs. So again, that is the major gist in the revision in this policy. Is that if you put yourself out there, you have to kind of take the good with the bad is the best way to say it. And again, you know, they're saying that it will infringe upon someone's rights if we are deleting comments, which is the same guidelines that Jessica follows when she's maintaining her social media, or our social media pages.
And it even goes so far as to state, board members must be particularly aware of this risk when allowing community members to post comments publicly on the members' personal social media accounts. Such comments may be deemed it's stricken through, they may be creating a public forum. In other words, to not allow an unauthorized citizen, who is anybody, in this case, who is anybody outside the realm of the officials of the public schools of Robson County to use our internet service to voice their public comments or statements. Am I interpreting that correctly, Bobby? We're not to, in effect, allow our privilege of having this unique medium for the public schools of Robson County, that is protected, to be directly used by a person outside of the officials of public schools of Robson County, under any circumstances. Am I correct?
Right. So we are limited when you're not allowed the general public to get onto our network. This is more based upon once you have that social media platform and you put comments out there. If someone puts something on there that you may not agree with, this policy is saying you're not allowed to delete it because that person has free speech to say what they choose to, once you put that post or whatever it is you would like to place on your social media page. Again, which is the same thing Ms. Jessica does. If we post something, we do get negative comments and we are required to leave those comments there.
Jessica, you want to address?
Little hands raised. Okay. Yeah, we want to protect two-way communication and free speech to the highest degree that we can. Of course, if there's something slanderous, I will take that comment down. But yes, we want to keep all the comments up, negative or positive. Like you said, take the good with the bad. So absolutely.
And by and large, with another hand, Mr. Craig.
This might be to Mr. Bobby or Dr. Williamson. Did we have something a week or so ago that affected our technology where things were wiped away through emails that y'all were aware of or anything? I know they can look at stuff down at the central office or at IT, but did we have anything that just took away some stuff that y'all were aware of?
I'm not aware of anything.
I am not. Cole, are you aware of any?
No. Okay. That's my mistake then.
And just to add to that, Mr. Craig and Mr. Cole's comment earlier, we do have a system that attempts to penetrate our network periodically. So we are constantly testing our network for outside influences to come in.
And that's part of what I was asking because I know other counties are being hit with that cyber problem all the time.
We did get a phone call threatening that by June 4th.
July 4th.
July 4th, that they will be into our system and take control of our system. And so again, as Bobby stated, we've done penetration tests to make sure through a company that that can't happen. But we received that threat by 4th, that that would happen.
Well, my interpretation of that, I could be wrong, but the very fact that they pre-announced it doesn't give us much credence, in my opinion. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a recommendation that we accept Policy 2127 as underlined in red, new additions. Board member technology use.
There's been a motion and a second that we accept Policy Code 2127. Board member technology use. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion carries. Which brings us to Section 3220, Technology in the Educational Program. And the gist of this, as I see it, it is restating what we already know, that we are in a digital world and instruction is at the forefront of what is happening digitally, instruction in some way or another. And of course, that includes our schools. And the second paragraph goes on to say, and of course, I'm going to summarize, "Board expects that information and communication technologies be integrated seamlessly across the curriculum to support student achievement." And along with what we just heard, and I'm skipping down about midway, is school administrators and teachers are encouraged to develop and we can add students there to not only make our technology use more effective and more efficient and less subject to being vandalized or compromised in some way. And I had highlighted the sentence about midway, "School administrators and teachers are encouraged to develop additional strategies for integrating technology resources across the curriculum, using the power of technology to personalize learning and improve learning outcomes while making more efficient use of resources." So it's an ongoing process and one that we cannot let our guard down in protecting. And Dr. Williamson has just alluded to one example. Craig, along the same lines. And Dr. Williamson has just alluded one example and Craig along the same lines. And it just goes on to reiterate that our technology is a vital part of our instructional program and that we must continue to upgrade it, to maintain it, to utilize it effectively. And Dr. Williamson, I'm going to direct this last paragraph on that page one forward to you and just to hear your comment. "The superintendent may establish relationships with businesses and seek grants and other funding sources in an effort to acquire additional technological resources for the educational program and to support continuous out-of-school internet access for students." And I know that we, as a school system, obviously have and continue to partner with business entities on a number of fronts. One of which is, of course, being able to purchase technology at a price that's fitting for the school system. And obviously, just like any business contact, we, if you want to keep it going, you know, you keep the pump primed and you keep the relationship going. Is there anything that you would like to add to that?
I would just add, the bulk of our funding for technology is through our E-Rate process, which is a federal reimbursement. And so we do have a plan and Cole, you may want to speak to this in terms of how do we and when do we refresh our technology? We look at the hardware every four or five years. So we do have a solid plan in place at some point that may become a local request to help us keep up with technology. Cole, you want to add anything to that?
As the superintendent alluded to, we do use E-Rate funds for the majority of our technology-related infrastructure purchases or certainly qualified and funded fully through E-Rate. We do use that also to supplement student devices along with some federal funding. The past several years, we developed a five-year cycle for most devices in the district, whether it's interactive boards, iPads, Chromebooks. Those cycles will be adjusted as things change because, of course, technology is constantly evolving. Chromebooks, in the very beginning, Google said they were only good for five years. With the pandemic and things, they've extended that license agreement. So now they're suitable for up to 10 years. That does not mean that Chromebook will survive 10 years. That means that Google will support the Chromebook for up to 10 years. So obviously casualty rates and everything within the district, damages and lost and stolen devices, we probably don't expect for a device to last 10 years, but the possibility that a Chromebook could last 10 years is there. We expect much more to get the five to seven-year lifespan out of those devices. iPads, probably about five years is what we're looking at for those. Interactive boards, same thing about five years. Technology, about every 18 months, the product is obsolete. It's already been replaced with something bigger, better, newer. Developers and manufacturers continue to support those products, but at a certain point, they're classified as vintage and then eventually end of life. Once a device reaches end of life, the manufacturer no longer supports it. And basically, if you continue to use it, it's at your peril. They're not providing security updates or any patches or anything like that. So of course, we don't want to be using unsafe devices within the district. So at a certain window, our hand is kind of forced. Even the device is functional, we may no longer be able to safely utilize that device.
Hold on, Cole. And Mr. Chair, if I may, Cole, we're still a one-to-one district, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We have devices for every student in the county. The majority of them are Chromebooks. Our pre-K, kindergarten and first grade students utilize iPads. And from second grade to grade 13, they utilize Chromebooks in a one-to-one situation. The majority of them are 11-inch Chromebooks. We do have 14-inch Chromebooks that are available for students that may need, you know, whether it's an IEP or an ADA issue so that they can have a bigger device for more easily to see the screen. And same things with our iPads. If it's needed, we have a few larger devices. And we try to keep a stock in the warehouse so that we can swap out devices quickly if needed, so that we don't have to wait for devices to be ordered and arrive. It may be a several-week window. We try to keep a small stockpile in the warehouse so that we can swap out devices quickly if we have to.
And we address the district technology department ability to do minor repairs. I think that's critical.
Yes, of course, we have technicians. We try to do as many repairs as we can in-house. Sometimes that's just not suitable or feasible. So we contract out with several companies to expedite that repair process. A lot of times with the manufacturer, we purchase the extended warranty agreement so that that device is covered for at least three years. So if we have a device that gets damaged, we can contact the manufacturer. They will ship us a box. We can ship them the device and they'll ship us a replacement or repaired device, depending on the threshold of the repair. At a certain window, if it costs more to repair the device, we just replace it. Because why would we spend $300 to repair a Chromebook when we can get a new one for the same price? So it's a constant, you know, looking at the financial applications of what's suitable for the repairs. But we try to do all the repairs we can in a timely manner and contract out with other third-party companies to help facilitate that process.
And Cole, if I'm right, based upon what you just said, are we about at the midpoint in the lifespan of the Chromebooks at this point?
Chromebooks were purchased every year, different packages. Of course, with COVID, that was a huge initial purchase of over 10,000 devices in one purchase. Then there were several other windows where we purchased large quantities of Chromebooks. So of course, right now, the calendar, they're all aging out at slightly different timelines. That was kind of one of the determining factors with Google to extend the lifespan of the Chromebook. Because of course, like any many districts, we used SIR funds to purchase these devices. SIR funds are now gone. So how could any district report afford to replace 10,000 to 12,000 to 13,000 Chromebooks all in one fiscal year? You just can't do it. So that was one of the main factors of Google extending that lifespan of that user agreement or that AUE is what they call it, an acceptable use date, because they know districts cannot, you know, the finances are just not there to replenish those devices all in one fiscal year so that we can space it out. And we try to purchase several thousand devices a year, again, to supplement what we have that is aging out or devices that have we've lost casualties. So it's all about adjusting the calendar to try to get everything in a window to where we know we can designate this amount of funding to purchase these amount of devices every fiscal year to ensure that we have enough for the staff and students.
So the purchases were staggered, as you said, in a way. The lifespan would end at different times and not all at the same time.
Yeah, with the pandemic could kind of throw a wrench in some of that. Like I said, where we had to get a large amount of devices quickly. So we're trying to adjust the calendar as we come out of the pandemic and those lifespans to where we know, okay, we need to purchase around 4,000 to 5,000 devices every year to stay on track. Because we know we just can't physically afford to purchase 10,000 to 12,000 devices every year. It needs to be a much smaller number.
And Cole, talk about our inventory. How do we manage that and how do we determine what the level of devices we have on hand?
For the last several years, we've contracted with a new company, a one-to-one plus, to try to manage our asset management system with technology in the school system. We transitioned away from another product. We still use the other product to manage book assets in the media center. But for technology devices, we're using one-to-one plus for the past two to three years now. I think we're moving into our third year. As any transition, obviously, you have hiccups. I think we're on the low end of our hiccups at this point, but it allows us to keep a much more accurate account of devices within the district so that the staff know, okay, I can check out this device to this student and it's accountable. That's the biggest thing. It's accountability so that we know, let's just say that there are 1,200 devices sitting at Pembroke Middle and we know where those 12,000 or 1,200 devices should be. They should be assigned to staff. They should be assigned to students. And then, of course, if a device turns up missing, we can try to figure out, well, who was it assigned to and record-keeping. Just good business practice, basically. That's what we're trying to achieve is good business practice to know where your assets are. And of course, if there's ever, you know, a disaster and say we lost the building or something to that, we have records that we can produce to say, okay, well, there were 1,300 iPads in this building or there were 2,200 Chromebooks in this building. Because of course, you need record-keeping for assets for insurance purposes as well. So it's a well-rounded approach and that's what we're trying to do.
If you could stay up there for just one more minute. And you, in my mind, you thoroughly covered just about everything, I will say everything, that's on page two of four of 3220 just now. Unless anyone has any additional questions, you may be in agreement with me that Cole did a great job of that. If you do have a question, then you're free to ask it, of course.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Dr. Carr, because I think the next two policies, 3220 and the one that immediately follows makes reference to updating our policies or procedures in relationship to AI. Can you share a little bit about that?
Dr. Carr, before you talk about AI, share with us, at least in the back, may want to have that conversation, using technology as an instructional tool. Where are we with that? What are we doing at this point? And then talk about as we move into AI, please.
So in concerns to AI, generative AI is coming. It's here. And the state had pushed out, North Carolina Digital Teaching and Learning pushed out AI guidelines and collaborated and brought together the state in an east and a west side. And I'm one of those people, so I feel pretty privileged to be a part of that process. But what they've done is some January through upcoming to this June, they've pulled everybody together and gave specific professional development so that we can then lead and bring back to our PSUs what's here and then make the policy changes or guidelines for our own PSU as we're coming through. As we're moving into this work, we've looked at what softwares we currently have here and where those softwares are taking their edge on generative AI so things become familiar. So with different curriculum platforms we have, different softwares we're using with digital tools, each of them that we currently utilize in our classrooms have different pieces of AI and that PD will be forthcoming in the fall.
So the other part, Dr. Williamson asked, can you ask, talk to us about the technology we're using and how it's used to support instruction? So speaking about the DTL coaches and all the training that you're using to help support them in that work.
So for the past four years, we're in year four. The digital teaching and learning technology coaches are full-time teachers in the classroom and then take on the technology support role at their school site where they are each month trained on different pieces. So for instance, Canvas is our learning management system or NearPod and vocabulary or Kidum or Great Minds, different pieces of software that each teacher at each school site has that support with someone at their school site to help them to keep pushing forward, to bring updates as they come through each month.
Can you also speak to the pilot, the pilot we did at the
So blended learning has taken a new edge. And so Dr. Carr, Camicia, Scriben, social studies supervisor, Susan Miller Hendrick, science supervisor, and myself worked with middle grades. So we worked with the Red Springs Middle, Parkton, and St. Paul's Middle. And we worked with science and social studies teachers in grades five, eight, or six, eight, depending on the principal bringing together those teachers. And we went through ways to blend learning with technology and their actual content area to make their classroom more interactive and start collaborating and critical thinking and getting them ready for the different changes that are happening inside those content area standards. But then also to make them develop, the students being able to make those conversations and start building those creative skills and those collaboration skills so that the knowledge base is not just textbook and paper pencil, but it now is bringing into the paradigm for themselves their actual technology skill. So it's not just face-to-face or not just on a computer, but how do we leverage those different pieces as well? And so we piloted, we started with RTI. It's part of the rethink work. The state had provided some of the training for us and we did training for our teachers in the fall. And then in the spring, it went into actual action in that classroom where they started utilizing station rotation and starting using technology pieces as a portion of their teaching, their work in the classroom.
And so back to AI. What do we say to parents and teachers who are concerned that AI is going to make it possible for kids to cheat? How do we address that and put people's minds at ease?
So because we're trying to make things a little more familiar, right? So the teachers are already knowing AI is already here. And we're already experiencing, not just on the AI side, but just in student integrity and honesty and copyright and all that kind of plagiarism. That's something that we're always going to tackle regardless. But with AI, what we're going to try to push through and push forward to our teachers is training and professional development that they will understand the usefulness of it and understand there's going to be certain lessons that AI could be useful as a teaching modality and then there's going to be some that are not. So it's almost like in our classroom, we have whole group, we're going to teach the lesson. We're going to show them or teach the students how to use different pieces and what's going to be used. And then afterwards, it's then, how can we use this one piece of AI and how can we make this comfortable? But ultimately, we need to get our teachers on board and understanding things that are familiar and how it can be useful and then putting it in their hands. For instance, like in the AI guidelines from the state, they put out AI rubric where it's leveled with from zero to four, zero meaning no AI interaction in the lesson and then one and two and therefore four meaning it can utilize the whole entire piece. But getting kids to understand academic honesty in when they're putting out work. So that's, I'm going to say stealing, stealing someone else's work and saying it's their own is pure plagiarism and how they can utilize that AI tool and then learn how to put their own spin on that content and making it its own, but still utilizing and leveraging the tool that they've put through by actually citing it. So it's just a different version of what we all did way back when, when you went in the public library. You went, you know, you did your research, you had to go to the stacks, find it, you know, and do the MLA or APA citations. This is now that digital world. And how does that look like and what does that teaching look like? For the concerns to the parent end of it, our technology responsible use form has to be relooked at. It's going to be relooked at in the next month or so because we know back-to-school starts and we need to have everything ready for leadership for principals coming back in the middle of August. Inside there, part of the AI collaborative that I've been a part of, there's deliverables. And in the middle of June, the whole state pushes all their deliverables in there. So we will have content to start with and what other districts and PSUs are using. And we plan to use some of those things and then develop our own to fit our own PSU.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa. Are there other questions?
Dr. Williamson, where do we stand with the with the grant that we had with UNCP for monitoring activities on our Gaggle?
Good morning, everyone. Gaggle was initiated by UNCP earlier several years ago and we developed a partnership with them. We formulated that partnership and that partnership has expired with Gaggle. We currently use Gaggle with additional funds funded by the state that's been in place for about the past two years. And we're waiting for the state allocation to drop, as a matter of fact, as we speak. Last year, we actually used federal funding to support Gaggle. We used about $50-plus thousand, whereas the state provided a supplement of over, I believe, Philip, over 100-plus or 200-plus thousand. I'm not sure exactly. Do you recall the exact amount? 133. So we paid approximately a little bit more than 50. But that partnership began the process for Gaggle. We learned a lot through that partnership and we felt that that was a very valuable process. But that partnership ended as a result of their funding being exhausted as well.
Okay. Jerry? You have a question?
Yeah, going back to the discussion about generative AI, do we have a tool district-wide for AI detection?
The conversations inside PSU won't begin until mid, the end of June into the beginning of July where a committee will be formed, per Dr. Carr. In concerns to AI detector, in the sense of what I've experienced through the collaborative, it's unreliable. And so AI detection is, if companies have them, it's looking as if it's a waste of money because again, AI is nothing but that machine and the person behind it. And AI detectors, so to say, are not going to be able to keep up with the rapid growth of AI as it comes through and the knowledge base that it has.
Yep. So that's exactly what I was about to say. I mean, it's a cat and mouse game. So they're not reliable. I just wanted to make sure that no students were being impacted by AI detection because it's all about creating that relationship with your students and knowing what their levels are and being able to judge their writing based on that relationship.
I have one more question slash comment that dovetails with, integrates with, I think, everything that's been discussed. But it is actually going to another heading. So using the right protocol here, if we could get a consensus or a vote on technology in the educational program section, if there are no further questions addressing that specifically, can I kind of get a motion that we accept that section as discussed? Okay. All in favor, say aye. I think I heard some sighs of ayes, but I think we got what we need. And this really goes right in with everything else. And it's in the first paragraph of technology responsible use. The more that we, and I'm using that collectively, and Ms. Lisa, I'm putting you right in the middle of that because you're, I know you're the expert here, or one of them. And what I'm getting at is there are so many channels, i.e. devices, so many different collaborations, networks, ways to communicate, which is good because you're continuing to develop all aspects available of technology to produce a better product and a better learning environment. But, and I almost want to say this in a whisper, but it's public knowledge, the more that happens, the more there leaves the door open for those who are particularly savvy to use it in a clandestine kind of fashion, a negative one, that could end up undermining what is trying to happen by bringing all of these useful positive resources together. You know, there's a plus and a minus to just about everything that goes on. And we do know some about the safeguards to prevent that. But do you have anything to add to that as we go forward to undermine or combat the?
Right now, as long as we keep our students, our end user, right, our students at the forefront of learning and keeping it moving, then as long as the technology department, as it exists right now, we'll do everything in our power to keep them safe, especially while they're at school and when they have those devices at home. So that technology responsible use form is, sometimes can be a little on the lengthy side, but it's there because parents need to understand the importance of the different components inside that classroom and what handles. It's no longer that paper pencil and textbook, right? It's a lot of other resources and a lot of other things, but at the same time, knowing that their student, their child is safe in that seat.
Mr. Chair, we may, let me ask Cole, if you'll come back to the mic, two questions. One is, do we allow students to use their personal device and connect to our network?
To my knowledge, we don't have a bring-your-own-device policy set yet. I know one was looked at previous years ago but was not adopted for various reasons. Now, we do allow students to use certain devices on the network for medical purposes. If a student needs to monitor their blood sugar level, we of course work with them to make sure that that device is set up, any other health-related device. Now, we do maintain a public Wi-Fi network at all of our campuses. That public Wi-Fi network is very restricted. It functions kind of like a hotel system. So if you just show up at our school, whether you're a community member, a parent, or a student with a device and try to connect to that public network, it's going to kind of hijack your browser and route you to a login portal. If you're a employee or a student at public schools of the county, you already have an account where you can log in and you will be filtered correctly on that device based on certain requirements that you meet. If you do not have a pre-existing account, you have to register as a guest, and those accounts expire within so many hour window. And you're usually required to use a sponsor account to generate a guest account. So they would have to work with a staff member to get that guest account generated, to get them access onto our network. And of course, they are segmented completely from our rest of our network via VLANs so that if there is something harmful on their device, whether it's a computer or a tablet or something like that, it's completely segmented from our network. It cannot cross-pollinate, if you want to think about it like that. So if they bring something bad in, it's just going to stay isolated in that one little spot, can't spread anywhere else. But again, we try to accommodate as best we can, but there are many restrictions in place.
And my second question, in terms of our filters and notification, kids are trying to go where they should not be, talk to us about that and how that process works.
Okay. We transitioned about a year or so ago to a GoGuardian as a new content protection. So again, our staff or students, when they log into devices, GoGuardian should be detecting them. And again, are you a staff member or are you an employee? Are you a student? And what access level should you have on the internet as far as being able to access certain content? And if it can't tell who you are, then again, you should be very restricted because it doesn't know who you are. So you're going to get even less access than a student particularly would. So again, we try to do everything in our power to make sure that staff and students are filtered correctly to prevent any issues. I will tell you that one of the biggest issue is uncategorized sites. Basically, all these content providers and filtered companies subscribe to various international databases to where if I'm a, let's just say I'm Disney, or I'm Apple, or I'm Google, or whoever, we submit any websites or any domains we own to an international organization and you classify yourself, basically. So you say, well, I'm a shopping website, or I'm an education website, or I'm a video site, I'm a whatever. Uncategorized sites that are not submitted to these international organizations show up exactly as that, they're uncategorized. So all these databases that are maintained don't know how to categorize that site. Are you an education site? Or you're an entertainment site? Or you're an adult site? Or you a chat site? So we do run into issues there. If we are very restrictive and block all uncategorized sites, probably our phones would never stop ringing because there are many things that people need access to that are legitimate, safe websites, but for whatever reason, they're just not categorized correctly at this international level through these organizations. So students, if they access inappropriate content, more than likely, it's going through an uncategorized site. And we usually get notified about that because, again, the staff are using products to monitor those students, like GoGuardian teacher, and they can see, okay, this student is off-task. What are they doing? Okay, this student is really off-task. They're doing something they shouldn't be doing. How did they get access to it? And I would say the majority of times, it's an uncategorized site. And of course, they report it to us and we immediately block it so that it can no longer be accessed again. So it's a constant cat and mouse struggle. We do everything in our power to ensure that they're safe. It's a constant battle, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, make a motion. We accept policy thirty-two twenty-five forty-three twelve seventy-three twenty as suggested. No further discussion.
Is there any further discussion on that particular policy under consideration that Henry just mentioned, technology responsible use for two-twenty-five? We, I think both Cole and Lisa covered it well. Any questions that we may have had introduced or anticipated? And the language of that content verifies their input. And again, I am personally satisfied with it. Is there a second to that? There is a second to that motion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Aye.
Yes?
Sorry that I was in favor. It was just a little delayed, my apologies.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to student promotion and accountability. Believe I'm on target with that one. Thirty-four twenty. And of course, it's, the title is really self-explanatory. And of course, one of the most considered topics in this day and time. I'll just briefly address the purpose, which is self-evident. Really, the board believes that all students should progress to the next level of study only after they are proficient in their knowledge and application of the current curriculum level, to the extent reasonably possible. Students should be given as much time, as little time as they need to be proficient at a particular level of study. Students will be promoted to the next level of study as described in this policy. And then the section proceeds to discuss promotion standards and diploma standards as we now have them. And of course, the purpose of the policy is to determine if we need to adjust in any way such promotion standards and others that have to do with accountability. And of course, inherent in that, and I, I'm jumping a little bit down to the last part of paragraph B, the standards and process will incorporate all state law, state board of education policy requirements, including those for assessment and promotion. Third-grade students is, and it goes on and gives a statute reference there. Anyway, it addresses it, I think, very thoroughly. It's one that we obviously need to take very seriously. So I would invite your comments, input this time.
Mr. Chair, if I may, let me ask Dr. Carr and Dr. Dallas to address this. In particular, at this point of the year, when promotions and retentions are at the forefront, the appeal process, if a promotion does not take place, please address that.
So throughout the year, we monitor students' progress and notifications are sent home to parents if we have a concern about academic progress at the time. We usually send those out each quarter. So towards the end of the year, they do have to provide written notification to parents that the principal is making a decision to retain a student. At that point, if a parent does want to appeal that, they usually start with the principal and they have the initial conversation with the principal. If after that, they feel like the decision is still not sound, then they'll take it to us and we meet with the parent and we basically just make sure that no policy has been violated and that there's just cause for the retention. And then we actually will make a decision, then it can go to the next step. But we ask that the schools provide documentation, like there is an individual reading plan in place or interventions put in place so that we can make sure that we've done everything we can along the way to try to meet that student's needs. Because of course, retention is a last resort, right? We really don't want to do that as much as we need to, so we use that very sparingly. But we do follow that appeal process.
Dr. Dallas, how does that work when you have kids that have two sets of parents? And I've had situations where I've had parents to come to me and they're concerned, they said, he said, and one set of parents knew what was going on, the other didn't. How do we keep accurate records and identify what processes we are going through with those students to identify their deficiencies and what we're trying to do to get the child on board?
So usually, that is dealt with at the school level. So if you have a situation where a student has divorced parents, right, and I'm trying to communicate to both parents, that's usually the conversation that starts with the principal to make sure that when a notification letter is sent home, another parent, maybe the non-custodial parent, might request that they receive that, and they are allowed to. So usually, those conversations of who, if it's someone outside of who normally attends to the school business of the child, they request that from the principal and then we can make those accommodations. When we do appeals, I mean, we send it home to the parent, once again, the custodial parent. If another parent who has access wants that paperwork, they can request that. So we really start with that, because I can get kind of intricate. We start with at the school level with that. They usually know who's dealing day-to-day on the school matters.
Any further comments? Question? Yes, sir.
On page, just out of curiosity, this come up a few years ago, page three of eight on thirty-four twenty. Now, item G, do we have a lot of that in the county? Or any at all? Do we have any at all?
And really, very little across the state.
Okay.
It is a state board policy, but very few students take advantage of that.
And that would be, if it was done, they would have to share that, I guess, to a teacher, evidence to a teacher with some kind of all-written communication that they could do that? Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Carr, will you or Dr. Dallas, either one, address read-to-achieve, the retention around read-to-achieve and how kids can get promoted, please?
So under the read-to-achieve policy, of course, our third graders have to be able to demonstrate reading proficiency by the end of third grade in order to receive a promotion. There's a couple of different opportunities for students to demonstrate reading proficiency. It can be on the end of grade, it can be through their DIBELS eight. In some situations, we've used portfolios in the past, but students have pathways to demonstrate proficiency. By the end of third grade, so right now, we have kids who've taken their DIBELS eight, which is Amplify, and they're taking their EOG. So if they have not demonstrated proficiency at that point, then they get invited to our reading camp, right? So at reading camp, they get another opportunity to take an RTA retest. So they have several opportunities to show proficiency. If at the end of third grade in summer camp, they do not demonstrate reading proficiency, there is actually a label that goes into Power School that is an RTA reading retained label. So what it does is it shows that that student has not demonstrated reading proficiency at the third grade level yet. In fourth grade, they then get an opportunity to take that RTA test again. They get an opportunity to be assessed through Amplify again. And if at that point, they demonstrate proficiency, that label comes off of them. So it's kind of a tracking piece that will show how many of our students are proficient in third grade right away and then how many are able to gain proficiency along the way.
So there are interventions and obviously, reading competency, it is a primary requirement for being promoted to the next grade. But what I'm reading and what I'm seeing here, you just said it, I want to make sure I want to make sure I've got it right, is that there are multiple opportunities, even in this, this summertime that we're upon right now. There are multiple opportunities to make that happen. That the, the resources, the materials, the methods are all there to bring that student to where he or she needs to be. So come August, they can move to the next grade level. That, that opportunity is there. And what I also believe I'm understanding is there is a system-wide, I'll even say urgent message or publicity to communicate with the parents that fact, because sometimes that is the missing piece.
This year, we were able to implement individual reading plans. So for any student grade K through four that was demonstrating reading deficiencies based on Amplify, they were placed on an individual reading plan, which is also part of this policy. So that plan documents the steps that are being taken to try to move that child towards proficiency. Parents are notified right away when that plan's put in place, that your child has this plan and the reason why they have the plan and what we're trying to do to rectify that. So we use that all year long. So parents are notified several times through the IRP process as well as we have a concern of academic performance letters that go out each quarter. But as you said, we build an intervention on a daily basis. Our second and third grade students go to reading camp and that's another opportunity to continue to build. And of course, we share different resources that parents can continue to use at home throughout the summer as well. Like ClassWorks is something they can continue to use. There's a digital library they can continue to use. So we encourage those resources.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, neither one can answer the question. When we get a request from parents to retain a child, do we honor that? Do we have to honor that? Talk about that, because we, we receive those every once in a while.
So under, under general statute is always the principal's decision, has the ultimate decision to place a student in any grade. So a parent request for retention does not necessarily indicate that that child will be retained. We follow the same process. Usually it begins with a parent meeting. We look through data to see, is there really a educationally sound reason why this child can be retained or should be retained? Oftentimes, principals will work with parents to look at something that might be called a promotion. Plus, we promote the child, but we talk about all the support that can go into place for that child next year. So a parent just requesting a retention does not need to be honored. It is the principal's decision and responsibility to grade and place students.
The, Dr. Dallas, looking at the credit from studying abroad, how many students do we, do we normally have participate in that?
We do not currently have any at all.
I mean, is this something that's, that's the state's recommendations? Or I'm, I'm just wondering how this came about?
It is a recommendation from the state, but we currently have no students participating in this.
And if we did, how would that be funded?
There's no funding from us in regards to studying.
So that, that would be the personal student responsibility?
Yes.
I make a motion, Mr. Chair, it will set policy thirty-four twenty as suggested.
Then a, a motion and a second, that we accept policy thirty-four twenty as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And I do agree with what I said in the beginning. This is a very thorough treatment, a lot, a lot of questions that could be, have been answered and also answered by very capable staff. So thank you. We will move on then to policy thirty-four sixty. Graduation requirement. Oh, by the way, do, do we need to take a, a break of this, of some kind? Any kind? No? Okay. All right. Again, graduation requirements. And again, to get started, I'll, I'll read the opening sentence. The board recognizes the importance of setting rigorous graduation requirements to help ensure that students are receiving an education that will prepare them be career and college-ready and productive members of, of society. And then, of course, the language goes on to state what, what those requirements are. There, you will note that there is a paragraph there in the middle of the page that has, well, not in, the entirety of it has not been stricken. And so that we do need to pay attention to the very first part of it. The principal shall ensure that students and parents are aware of the number and nature of credits required for high school graduation, the potential to complete high school graduation requirements in three years and the availability of early, early graduate college scholarships. And I'll just say that from my, where I sit, I think we as, as a system have done a super job. You know, if, if you're alive and walking around and hear and know anything about education, you're going to be hearing about this, this topic, which I, is so, is so vital, especially for a lot, a lot of our students. And so I commend everyone that is a part of getting that information out. And then moving on to letter A, as described in State Board of Education policy, GRAD 004, all students must fulfill the course unit requirements of future-ready full course of study unless they are approved for future-ready occupational course of study. And, and then there's another statement. And, and I'll have to admit, I, I need a little tutoring. I, I have a concept of what future-ready means. I, I would like, and I of all people who, who have been a, a career-centered person, you know, we're using different language here and, and it encompasses more perhaps than when I was in that capacity. Could someone kind of enlighten me and maybe some of the others need a little bit more enlightenment about just what future-ready consists of?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So if we will turn to page, page five of seven. Option number four would be the current plan that students are under. And Jadael chime in if I, if I misspeak here. But option number four would be the plan that our current, most of our current students are under. And Future Ready Core requires the four Englishes, three maths, two. No, that's prior to, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, if we would turn page three, Future Ready Core for the first time in 2021. So that would be four Englishes, four maths, the three sciences, four social studies and one health MPE. That is the basis for Future Ready Core. And so what the gist of this policy, Chair, and, and for everyone else, is there was a general statute passed this last school year that school boards could not require more than the 22 units to graduate as required by Future Ready Core. So all we've done, our local policy did require 28. So that language had just simply changed from required to recommend. And so students had to make that decision to enter or to do an early graduate with the 22 units at grade eight. And Jadael, if you were able to speak, I think the coun, your counselors have worked through that through the registration process.
Yes, sir, they have. And I didn't know if he was relating just a general working knowledge of what Future Ready Core means. And it's like a focused integration of digital tools and a university connectedness with strategic planning is really what Future Ready means. So you're just integrating, like you said, all those pieces to make sure that they're ready for adult life after leaving high school.
And Jadael, am I also hearing correctly? Not, not only does Future Ready make them ready for adult life, but it, it also prepares them for a number of different options for continuing their, their education without having to do something remedial that they're able to springboard, if you will, in, into a number of different higher education options as well. Am, am I correct in that assumption?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, let me ask Jadael, Dr. Carr, Dr. Dallas. Let's talk about the law that kids can graduate in three years, starting with that process that they have to sign off on that. And then two, that does not lock them in. Okay, let's talk about that for clarification.
So we work closely with Jadael in reviewing what the requirements are, but a student would have to notify us when they're registering in eighth grade, for ninth grade, that they want to move forward with the accelerated three-year pathway. Once they notify us, there is a meeting with the parents. There is a meeting with the child and they have to sign off realizing that they will be expected to complete 22 credits by the 11th grade. In this, we also share what this means is that they cannot be considered for, their final ranking is in 11th grade, they will never be a 12th grader, that they cannot be considered for honors awards, scholars, or any sort of designation that a 12th grader would normally receive. It also means they would not be able to participate in anything once they're graduated, like athletics, senior trips, senior picnics, project graduation, anything related that a student would normally do that last 12th grade year. So they would officially finish at 11th grade and there would be quarterly check-ins with the child to see if that child is on track and if that's the path they still want to take. So they can always come out, but once they're in it, they have to, they cannot sign up after eighth grade registration. So that is the only time that you can do the 22 credits. But another thing that we've shared is that this also makes, we have to make students aware that they won't have certain requirements to attend certain colleges if they choose to take this path.
And then Jadael, so with that understanding, and there's some issues in terms of scholarships, being able to be awarded scholarships, and that's why that language is in that law, correct? Can you speak to that?
Yes, sir. If they finish up at the end of the 11th grade year, then they won't be eligible for the scholarships that are statewide for them, because they have to have that ranking in that final year, that 12th grade year in order to qualify for those, for a lot of the scholarships.
Dr. Carr, is, is that, is that information communicated with parents as well as the student? If that's, if that is an agreement, the 22 credit?
They literally, we have a document, so once they request it, that they sign off, that they get a copy of to say, these are all the things that will happen if this is the choice that you make, so that it's clear and so that they can meet on a regular basis, at least yearly. And we, so that we can make sure this is really the path they want to take.
So let me be clear, if, if, if they do take this path, am I hearing correctly that it will preclude them from most or all future scholarships?
It will exclude them from all scholarships.
Well, but maybe not all, but some, right? If they, if they choose this path, the Future Ready path and, and complete their requirements through grade 11?
That exclude them from private scholarships?
Yeah.
When you look at the scholarships, a lot of them request that 12th grade year for that final ranking. Their ranking will end at the end of 11th grade year. Their courses and their requirements will be different. But a lot of the scholarships, they might qualify for some that are not, not necessarily private, but maybe community-based scholarships they could still apply for. So there's just a, a wide spectrum of scholarships, but they will be excluded from a majority of those that are academic.
Got you. Aye.
Mr. Chair, with the state recommendation, changing the wording requirements to recommendations, looks like it's a major highlighted here. I make a motion to will set policy thirty-four sixty.
I second it. And Mr. Chair, I just have a comment I want to make. You can go ahead and do the vote, I just want to make a comment.
Henry, clarify where, where you were speaking. What, what were you referencing? I'm not, I'm not with you on this. Tell me again.
With the requirement?
Yes.
Whenever you look at the grids, it's, Mr. Bobby just shared with us that the state says now we can't require it, but boards can recommend it. And that's the, the upgrade for this policy.
Got you.
Thanks for your question.
I second that, Mr. Chair, but I have a comment. And I think Mr. Jadael is there and probably relates more to athletics than, than anything else. We got all these different plans here and there's things here, exceptional children or just whatever plan you're going to be on. But we've seen where we got this kid that's a senior and they're ready to graduate. They might can get this scholarship, but they didn't take these courses they needed in the ninth, 10th grade. And now they don't get the scholarship, whatever. And a lot of times it is athletic. Most of many times it might not be. But I'm just asking and saying with all, with our counselors, with our principals, you know, all this stuff here, just please make sure we do it one-on-one and not just going in from the eighth to the ninth grade. To me, it's every year, because we, we don't want to end up with kids, their senior year and they can only take eight courses and they need 11. And then they can't graduate and there's an issue. And that has been something that has went on sometimes in the past. And I'm not saying it's nobody's fault. We just need to try to do everything we can to make sure they know the classes they need to take and their parents know it too.
That's right. Mr. Chair, if I may, it's great, thank you for that comment. And so I may ask Jennifer and Jadael, will you address that? Because we've had that conversation with counselors and their responsibility and accountability to ensure that does not happen.
Yes, sir. That is an ongoing concern that we have discussed. Jadael and I have had frequent conversations because the importance of those students knowing annually where they are, sometimes also with semester, understanding is very important. So we've had a conversation that moving forward, that we will ask each counselor in the future to work independently with students to ensure that they know what they are expected to do, when they're expected to do and how the outcome will be early on, well before the senior year. Jadael, I don't know if you caught that, but what Dr. Williamson was asking is ensuring that we ensure and speak to our counselors to let our students know that where they are performing annually and that they're meeting course requirements in, in reference to scholarships and other areas as necessary. So I know moving forward, we've had a plan to put that in place. I don't know if you would like to elaborate as well. I also know that Jadael is doing monitoring visits that she has put in place to ensure that she is meeting with counselors as we move forward. So I know we're in a various cycle. She can address that monitoring cycle too, because I think that is a valuable piece of information that we should share as well.
Good morning. So this past year, we put something new in place. We have the scholarships that are on every one of the schools' website for them to be able to view. But on top of that, the four-year plans. So making sure that they're coming from eighth grade to high school and they're looking at their four-year plans and it's in alignment. in alignment. We use the career, major clarity, for them to make sure that it is aligned with what their goals are. It will change eventually in high school, but to try and make that alignment. And then also sitting down with the counselors, so I've been on site twice each year, this year, to every one of the schools, to sit down with them personally, to make sure that they're mapping and following children, and doing what they need to do. And one of those areas that we talk about are scholarships, we talk about the four-year plans, we talk about that connectivity from major clarity to what they want to do, to the academic achievements, to the future of post-secondary. So we're talking about that and putting more alignment in that for the counselors, so they're following children and tracking them a whole lot better. So with scholarships, we do the best we can, but if you go into the tracking tool, you can see we're growing so much more with kids doing scholarships and athletics. We have tried to make sure we're partnering with them in doing that as well.
One of the things that I would like to reiterate is also this year, what we did look at putting in place is to ensure that the way students sign up for their courses is consistent throughout the district. We did have a process in place where it was different at different schools. We discovered that early on this school year by Jadael's site visits, so we put in place a check and balance to ensure that we have the same process across the district to ensure unified consistency with course selection.
So with that one, we've been clear that high school kids need to have their fall schedule in hand when they leave on Friday. Is that the case?
So they have finished up, our freeze date was yesterday, but they are at ninety-eight and a hundred percent across the district for all the high schools for fall semester schedules. They want to go back and tweak it a little bit more, so we've given them leeway until tomorrow to do that, but by Friday, all students will have their fall semester schedules in hand before they leave.
Great. Second point is, the board had put in place at least one counselor at each high school would be twelve months. We had a conversation this week that a second counselor would be eleven months, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the purpose of what Craig just talked about.
That counselor already broken our budget. That's second, eleven month.
Not, well, it's in one of our budgets that we can, yes.
Terry?
Yes, I was wondering, how does a student learn about, or how are they being notified about Penn Foster?
You want one of us to speak on that, Dr. Williamson?
You can, Dr. Barton, you can, and then Jadael, yes.
I can end it, Jadael, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, Mr. Terry, we don't, that's usually a conversation, if students have decided to drop out, or if they're having difficulties at school, it's always, I always feel like Fairmont High School is the best option for the students in my district, so we do everything we can to keep them here. If it's a student that's gotten behind, or maybe in danger of not graduating on time, we always use LAP as an alternative to kind of help get kids caught up, but, for example, we had a student yesterday that a mom came out and told us that they had made a decision to, that they wanted to drop, and that was our next step, and well, if there's nothing else that we can do here, let us help you see the options that Penn Foster can offer you, but it's not something I advertise, it's a option individualized by the needs of the student.
And my only qualm about that is, is just if those conversations take place, just make sure that student knows the limitations on, that's going to be placed on them if they get that diploma from, you know, from Penn Foster, because it's going to limit you on your next steps.
Terry, a good point, Jadael, we had to address that issue and clarify for those students that as it was operating was not acceptable to need to a diploma. Will you address that? So we had to clean that up.
So with the options for Penn Foster, you're limited on the diploma type that they can receive, so we make sure, like Mr. Dr. Barton said, that this is our last and only option after we've exhausted everything that we have for PSRC for them to be able to continue graduation with us. We go through a whole list of things and options for them prior to that, but Penn Foster does limit where they can go post-secondary, where they can go into the workforce, so we do have those conversations, just like we do when we were referring a student to homeschool.
And what they were issuing, we had to clarify that, Jennifer, you might want to speak to that, the letter that they were issuing and wanted us to accept.
Say that one more time, Dr. Williamson. The letter?
Right.
For us, being able to release them from PSRC, for us to have acceptable documentation for graduation, that we have to make sure that there's a letter that comes from Penn Foster, for us to be able to put it in, for us to have them count, not count against our graduation cohort as well.
Jadael, have a further question. I weigh behind, explain Penn Foster to me, please.
Penn Foster is a curriculum that they can use, it's almost similar to someone who would leave out and do homeschool, but it's online, and it's strictly online, and they do the awarding and the accreditation on their part. So you remember?
So if somebody, I'm sorry.
It's very similar to that.
So if somebody goes to Penn Foster, are they considered like a transfer student, like somebody that transferred out rather than dropped?
They are considered a transfer because they're going to another educational institution, but it's not a public.
Will the end result be a bona fide high school diploma?
They'll get a diploma, I don't know what the accreditation on there is, and it could be different from based on what the institution that's providing that, but they will get a diploma, but it will be similar to an adult high school diploma that you would get from RCC as well. The GED.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, my challenge with that is just their next step, just making sure that they know that their options are going to be limited in terms of, I mean, going to a university, for example, they may have to wait until they're twenty-one before they can be admitted, or whatever age it is, I think it's twenty-one.
Okay. Any further questions, Terry, or if anyone tuning in? Thank you, Jadael and Jennifer, for enlightening us there, appreciate that. Are there any further questions? Yes, sir.
Questions being called around the side.
Okay, all right. All right. Question has been called and also seconded for policy thirty-four, thirty-six. All the papers say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to extracurricular activities and student organizations, thirty-six, twenty.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before?
Yes, sir.
I placed at everyone's desk a copy, an updated copy of policy thirty-six, twenty, and if I can, I'll walk through why we have this policy as opposed to the one that's included in our book. So the reason that we're updating thirty-six, twenty, first and foremost, was because we have to make a decision about home-school children, and whether or not we're going to allow them to participate in athletics at our schools. But when Glenn, Mr. Patterson and I looked at our current policy thirty-six, twenty, and started walking through with, we realized that there were some holes and gaps within this policy that may not have aligned with the current general rules for participation in athletics. So we reached out to our attorney at the School Board Association, and to be completely honest, when I questioned her on our policy thirty-six, twenty, the first thing she did was laugh. She said, you guys have the most confusing policy in terms of athletics as anybody in the state. She says, I don't know how you guys got to this, she says, but every time I look at this, I question some of the rationale behind it. So at that point, Mr. Patterson and I asked her, as all of us are aware, the School Board Association has cookie cutter policies, and then districts build upon those policies, stand within the framework of the cookie cutter version that keeps us aligned. So I asked her to send me policy, their cookie cutter version of thirty-six, twenty, and that's where Mr. Patterson and I started, along with having conversations back and forth with McKenna a couple of times, just on some wordsmithing here or there. So in relationship to the draft policy that everyone should have, this falls in line with districts in and around us, and districts that our schools would participate in or with, in terms of allowing students to participate in athletics. So what you will see in red, as with all the other policies, are the additions that Mr. Patterson, along with some conversations with Dr. Williamson, that we included that would fall in line partially with what we already have in place, but also keep us in line with the current athletic, state of athletics in North Carolina. So, Mr. Chair, if you can, I'll walk through those reds that we added.
Yes, sir.
So under B, additional rules, we did add the language of students being able to participate, grade six through twelve, and middle school students are, I mean, grade six students are allowed to participate. And so the major change, one of the changes at the end of grade twelve, as we know, the governance for sports and athletics in North Carolina now has been shifted to the state board, so we cleared that up, and also we added the language of anything that the public schools of Robinson County or the superintendent would like to add. B, we reference sixth graders being able to participate in all athletics except for tackle football. C, students transferring within the school district, there is, Mr. Patterson, if I'm wrong in this, let me know, but one of the athletic rules state that if a child transfers schools, they must set out three hundred and sixty-five days, but the local LEA can allow them to participate immediately, as long as they follow the transfer policy. So C makes reference to that, so as long as the student falls within and completes the transfer within our designated window, and that's March first to April first, then they are allowed to participate immediately at those new schools. D, McKenna and I, again, is the attorney for the School Board Association, and a bit of history behind this one, when the early college was first put into place, students were not allowed to participate in athletics. Sometime after that, there was a decision made that students could participate in athletics at the early college, as long as it was a part of their homeschool. Never had anything in writing, it was an understood procedure. Recently, students who have been accepted to the early college are going through the transfer process and saying, I may stay in Lomont District, but I want to play sports at Purnell Sweat. And again, in researching other districts, they just simply do not allow that. They simply say, if you're an early college student, whatever your homeschool is, based on your residency, is where you're going to be allowed to participate in athletics. We do know that we have a handful, not many, students at early college that have already kind of gone through the transfer process, and we did not want to penalize them, so that's where the language came in, beginning this school year, or the upcoming school year. If you are at early college, you need to play at your homeschool. So over, starting at the bottom of page three of seven, the School Board Association gave us three different options in terms of allowing homeschool students to participate in athletics within our district. So we chose option number two, and this falls in line with what would have happened prior to, again, the governance for athletics, saying each LEA decides how they're going to handle that. So if a homeschool student decides to participate or would like to participate in athletics with us, they must be enrolled for fifty percent of the school day, they must be enrolled the entire school year, and they must have all proper academic documentation from the homeschool of the prior school year. If they choose to withdraw after the season is over, or they enroll late, if they withdraw after the season is over, then they are, they are not allowed to participate in athletics for three hundred and sixty-five days. So again, this falls into line to our practice prior to us having to decide what we wanted to do in terms of homeschool students. Other than those changes that we have indicated in red, this policy, again, falls in line to what the recommendation is from the School Board Association, and what we are seeing from our surrounding counties and/or other districts that we participate against. And so what we are asking, and we have shared this with all high school, middle school principals, we also shared it, we spent thirty to forty-five minutes discussing this with our high school athletic directors on Friday, so they are aware of this as well. Again, nothing within this policy prevents a student from participating in athletics from, as long as they go through the transfer process and they do it within that window that is designated in our transfer policy.
Terry?
Am I correct in my understanding that a student cannot request a transfer solely based on athletics?
That is correct. There are various reasons that a student may, may request for, and those are designated in policy forty-one, fifty. It should, it could be academic, academics, it could be childcare issues. There are five different reasons that a student can request a transfer, but athletics is not one of them, because remember, they are students first, so to address their academic needs, then they become athletes after that takes place.
Right. So why is it that it seems that you hear stories around the district about, well, a student transferred from this school to another one because they wanted to be a quarterback, or because they weren't getting enough playing time over here? So if that's just what you hear, they're actually, or whether or not that's the real reason, rationale, or whatever, they're actually, documentation states that they're transferring for another reason.
Right, so again, in the transfer, we all understand that there's, that a student may leave based on athletic purposes, but in terms of our policy, that is not a legal reason for a student to transfer. It should be because of academic issues, physical or mental health, safety, in order for, and siblings, that's a reason, and also other legal requirements that may require a transfer. A student cannot transfer solely based on athletics.
Thank you.
Question. About insurance. And I'm looking at the first paragraph on, actually, the third page, thirty-six, twenty, begins with interelastic athletics on behalf of a school under the board's jurisdiction, and I'm looking at the referencing, the two points, numerical points on insurance, agrees to cover homeschool student athletes under its catastrophic athletic accident insurance policy, or verifies that the homeschool student athlete is independently covered by catastrophic accident insurance. So I'm assuming that's an either-or. Uh, so I'm assuming that's an either or choice. But I'm also assuming that i- if they decide to go under our system's catastrophic athletic insurance, that uh, that would mean a differential in a positive way. In other words, cost more money in if we, if we, if they went in under joining the catastrophic insurance policy of the system versus getting their own.
Uh, Mr. Gentry, let me answer that. Um, in reading that, if they are home schooled and they are trying out for uh, athletics within that school, they have to provide their own insurance. Now, once they make that team, then we cover them under our catastrophic insurance. Everyone on our eligibility list is covered under the catastrophic insurance.
Okay, I got you. So i- in the beginning, before they've actually made the team, they're under their own. And then if they make the team, they're under the so-called blanket policy for the entire system.
That's correct.
So Glenn, clarify again, what would require a student to have to sit out for one year? And how can a student transfer and participate? Um, let's clarify that immediately.
Okay, um, again, a student cannot transfer for athletic purposes. Uh, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, as well as the State Board of Education, states that if a student transfer for ath- athletic purposes, that they have to sit out for three hundred and sixty five days. Um, under the conditions, the only exceptions is, one, if it's a bona fide move. And bona fide move meaning that those individuals have to uproot from their home in that district that they are moving from and move into a home in the district that they are going to. Now, they cannot have furniture in this home. They cannot have two residents. So they have to uproot and move into the other district in order to qualify to play instantly.
And then, will you clarify, out of district transfers requires the signature of both superintendents?
Yes, sir. Uh, also, if a student is transferring from one LEA to another LEA, then that student has to have the permission of both uh, superintendents. Um, once both superintendents agree, then uh, a form is filled out and sent to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And along with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and the State Board of Education, they have a committee that will sit down and try to determine whether uh, the transfer is is uh, not a athletic uh, transfer. So once that's determined, then they will give that student the okay, whether they will be allowed to participate in the athletics at that particular school. Yes, sir.
I, I don't see it here, but taking it a step further, I'm, I'm looking within our own school system. And I, I do know, we all know of instances in the past where a student has transferred from a school A within the public schools of Robson County to school B within the school, public schools of Robson County.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, obviously, that's different from coming from out of, outside of the district. And i- is there, are there rules governing that?
Yes. Um, again, as Mr. Bobby spoke earlier, we have a window from uh, March to April that those students are allowed to transfer within the school district. And that comes before you guys, the, the board and, and for approval. And once they are approved by the board, then they are granted the opportunity to participate in the athletics at that particular school that they transfer to.
But there, that's only through that window of time?
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
March, April, whatever those dates are.
And Mr. Chair, may I add to that, that that transfer process must be done annually? So once we, if they grant it one time, that does not mean there's granting for every year. That student family must do it annually in order to be granted that right to transfer.
And and do they, as you alluded a minute ago, do they, do they also have to have an established uh, address at the, at the, the district, in the district that they're going to?
Not if it's, well, if you're talking about in district or in county.
Yeah, in district. He's, 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 he's living, I'm just throwing that out. They live in Fairmont almost a couple of months. Does, does he have to have a bona fide address in Lumberton?
No. No, no, they do not. Um, they do not. As long as it's board approved, then they are capable of living in Red Springs, going to Lumberton, or living in Fairmont, going to St. Paul's.
Gentry, Mr. Gentry, I have a question. Oh, I don't see it in here anywhere, and we, we gave that window of transfers. Uh, so now, Mr. Bobby, we can't transfer in August or September. But, cause that window was, is closed. But also at one time, we had in here, because prior to it wasn't, that you could uh, and I always say you can't transfer for athletics, and I'm, I'm not going to get into that. But uh, you could only transfer one time during the year and participate. And what that eliminated was kids playing football at school A, transferring to go play basketball somewhere else and then transferring back to school A. Now, that got eliminated when we put in place that you could only transfer one time during the school year and continue to play athletics. Now, that's not written. I don't see nowhere in here. So do we need to look at putting that back in? Cause Mr. Glenn, you, one time we had that. That was going on constantly. You'd play football at, I can take any school. We'd play football at Red Springs. Well, after football, I'm going to leave. I'm going to go to Lumberton and play basketball. After basketball is over, I'm going to leave. I might go to St. Paul's. Now, that was ongoing. Now, you can transfer. If it's now in this window, you're supposed to be at Lumberton. Well, I'm going to transfer and go to Red Springs. Well, you're at Red Springs. Now, if you transfer again, you can't play. I don't see that written here anywhere, but we did have that in place one time to stop that ongoing transfer. So my question, are we going to put that in here? What are we going, how are we going to look at that?
It seems to me that because uh, athletics can't be, is not necessarily a reason for transfer. That's not really a athletic policy issue as much as a transfer uh, policy issue in general. I mean, we may put a sentence or two in, in, in here about it, but that maybe should be mentioned also. If that's the case, cross-reference then in our transfer policy.
So.
So Glenn, what does the High School Athletic Association say about that?
Well, the High School Athletic Association states transfers is three hundred and sixty five days. That's bottom line. They don't have any, if you transfer from one school to the next, whether it's in county or in the LEA, or whether it's outside, it's a three hundred and sixty five uh, days suspension. So the locals have that right to make that, that rule. The local LEA have that right to uh, make that rule.
But Ms., I'm sorry, Dr. Williams, but Mr. Patterson, based upon our policies, the students allow that one transfer in the March to April. Any other move within the school must be a bona fide move. And a bona fide move would allow that student to participate. So Mr. Craig, a student just can't transfer.
Right.
The next move in within a school year must be a bona fide move. And that would be the only way a child would be allowed to participate at that second school.
You're talking about moving physically?
Physically moving, and that was the situation Mr. Patterson described earlier. The family uproots, takes everything out of the house, goes move into another house and establishes that as their residency.
Montez, did you have a question?
Um, yes, I just got a couple of things. Um, we'll talk about sports and academics. Um, I'm a firm believer in, you know, you got to do what's best for your, your child as a parent, you know, whether it's academics or whether it's sports, you know. If we let kids transfer for academics, I don't see no difference that people transfer for sports. That, that's just me. Everybody, every school in this county have benefited from the transfer portal, whether it's academics or athletic. Athletically, I can go, I can name every school and the kids that then transfer, whether they were in district or out of district. So my thing is, I think as a parent, you got to do what's best for your child because there are some of these programs out here, but I got a child or something that want to play collegiate level. I have aspirations to play collegiate level. I want to send them to some of the schools. I'm just being honest. People may not like what I have to say, and that's it. I'm just being honest. There's a lot of programs that, there's a lot of programs that, that some schools don't take serious, serious enough or don't got the stuff in place for the kids. And that's just what I got to say.
So, so to that point, this policy does not change some opportunities. We're simply saying, do it within the window. It's the board's right. We all recognize that. What we are addressing in this policy more than anything else is those schools, for whatever reason, try to get around the policy. Don't follow the, the timeline and then try to backdoor an athlete in from another county without the superintendent's signature. That's what the problem is. I'm not signing off on it. It's not fair to our athletes. That's all that we are addressing in this new policy, not taking away any rights, any, you know, authority of the board to make transfer. We look at things one-on-one. What we can tolerate is get labeled like some other districts that circumvent the system and recruit and bring in athletes not the proper way to play sports. We can't do that, and we're not, and we're not. And, and we just have not been vocal about it. Parents are aware of that because we get calls now, this school is recruiting my child. Correct, Glenn?
That is correct.
Now, I mean, so this is notice, this is clear notice in the policy that we're going to be above board in what we do in dealing with athletes. We have not changed a thing, and I'm simply saying to those schools, don't bring me a document based on athletics where it got a kid from another county, and we're not doing that. And the High School Athletic Association, they're addressing that issue more now than ever. Sir.
That's, one other thing, and Dr. Williams, you mentioned it, uh, not recruiting, okay? Do we want to look at or just leave it alone? Uh, putting some kind of penalties in if our own personnel are recruiting? And you're talking about, you know, other counties don't, okay, if we got personnel at our schools recruiting from one school to another, that we want to look at some type of fines or suspensions for people? And yes or no, I'm just saying, because, you know, we hear it. I mean, Mr. Terry mentioned, I mean, we, we hear it about athletics. If you're involved with it all the time. I know, but Monte does, Mr. John does. I hear stuff all the time. Do we want to address the recruiting issue that underhandingly or over, whatever? I mean, we all know what's going on to an extent. Uh, people getting phone calls or do, let you handle it individually as it comes in or what you find out that you need to do, or do we need to put something in place?
Mr. Craig, at this point, now that we have clarification in our policy, we have a policy that aligns with the High School Athletic Association. I think we let the policy do the work. We're going to continue to monitor everything, and we'll address those issues one-on-one. But I want to give A.D.s, high school principals, an opportunity to understand this policy. They've been in those meetings and we're watching, monitoring that. But at this point, I don't think that the board would want to do that. I wouldn't at this point.
And, and to add to that, Mr. Craig, um, the statement that we made at the end of B one A on page two, that uh, we do have leeway there with adding the public schools of Robinson County or the superintendent. So it does give additional power to Dr. Williamson outside of the Athletic Association if there are issues. Gives additional power to the board, but also to Dr. Williamson if there's an issue. That's the reason we added that statement there.
Trying to one at the top of the page.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and then, again, the ongoing conversation, I'm going to go back to Monte's statement. We have some student athletes, right, that need exposure. And we got to be mindful of that. And what we're saying is fine, the board can make a decision on a recommendation. They have that authority. Let's do it the right way above board because as you opened your comment, our job is to help our students. And sometimes we have to make decisions independent of, for the best interest of families and students. We're sensitive to that. What we can't tolerate is something done underhand. Not going to put up with that. Not going to do that.
Right.
What, let me, let me ask them a question while we're, while we're here. Um, so what is a means of, are, are you saying that there is a pathway to allow a transfer within the district for athletics, for the exposure?
No, n- n- no, sir. Uh, what we're saying is that students can only transfer during the specific window that our policy designates. And again, it, we cannot, that uh, athletics cannot be the reason, cannot be the stated reason for that transfer. So in terms of, like, the example Mr. Craig gave, if a student wants to transfer after football season's over, then that's not allowed because the only transfers that are approved uh, at the board are those that occur based upon policy forty one fifty from March to April.
Um, going back to Dr. Williams on the, on the recruiting and stuff, um, I'm glad you said that we'll take care of it in-house and let the principals and let Glenn look at it because we have a lot of, we have a lot of teams, um, coaches and stuff that coach A U teams, whether soccer, whether it's seven-on-seven football, whether it's basketball, and they're from all over the county. They're just not from one school. So if, if a team is, if a, if a kid is playing for this coach, this particular coach, whether A or B, it's human nature that somebody going to say he's recruiting or she's recruiting this kid. And that's not always, that's not always true. Sometimes this guy is, uh, this guy, this girl is taking up time with this kid, developing this kid and everything else. But it's human nature that people's going to go out and say that and say they're recruiting the kid and say they're trying to take this kid from this school. So I just want to, you know, go ahead and make that known because I get a lot of, a lot of phone calls and stuff that's saying that kind of stuff, and I, I know it's not true, but that's what goes on around here.
That's, that's absolutely correct, but there's a but to that. Those coaches need to know the rule and understand they cannot have a conversation with that. Glenn, speak to that. That is clear. Who can talk to that student?
Okay, that's called undue influence. Um, there is a policy in the North Carolina High School Athletic Association for that. Um, yes, they can play for those individuals, but there cannot be any conversation uh, with a parent nor that student to influence them to transfer to their particular school. Now, if there is a conversation, that coach needs to direct them to the principal. Okay, and then let the principal talk to them. Then that doesn't clear them as an athlete. They have to go through the necessary process. So the principal talked to them. If they enrolled, they can enroll in that school as a student, but they still cannot be a student athlete until the, till they go through the proper channels.
And, and again, I want us to be clear, we're not trying to hurt any program. We're trying to make sure we protect the eligibility of our student athletes, that they have the right to participate. That's all this conversation is about. How do we protect the eligibility of our student athletes that they would be eligible to participate in sports? That's what we're after.
Has this been shared with all of the athletic directors?
No, we're meeting with the middle school athletic directors due to test, and we were not able to talk to the middle school. But yes, we have met with all high school athletic directors, and they are aware of this policy.
Are they in agreement with it?
Yes.
And Mr. Gentry, again, this was shared last week with all middle school and high school principals. This, the draft policy was shared with them. Uh, we met with the high school athletic directors on Friday. Uh, we met with the, at high school athletic directors on Friday. I think I shared this either Wednesday or Thursday of last week with principals and asked them to share with the coaches and have conversations and provide any comments before today's meeting.
And have you received any feedback?
No, sir.
So having, having received none, you're, you're assuming that they're in compliance and in agreement?
That, that's the conclusion that I'm able to draw because no one has reached out to discuss any ins and outs or discuss changes or any, uh, additional recommendations.
Mr. Gentry, I had a question. I want to go back to, um, early college. Um, I'm gonna use my son for example. Um, his base school was Lompton High School. Um, if he'd have been in the early college, which is a small setting, um, his elementary and middle schools all were small setting. If something went wrong and he had to come back to Lompton, he wouldn't have been able to function wise as academic as he, um, should have. I think that early college students should also be given the opportunity to transfer to a small school setting, especially if they come from, um, somewhere like, um, Fergrove, which is a small school. Uh, if Lompton and Purnell is gonna be their base school, they might keep functioning. I think they should also be given that same opportunity as everybody else does in the district.
Mr. Chair, with the flexibility that we discussed with the superintendent and board being able to, um, take things on a personal matter, uh, depending on the situation, and uh, with the revamp of, of the hard work that, uh, Mr. Patterson and Mr. Bobby's done with the state here and research, I think we should accept policy thirty-six twenty as suggested.
Is there a second?
And Mr. Chair, if I may, before, before, um, we move forward, just to let you know that when we bring this full policy to the board, everything that's in brackets and those options that we are not choosing will be removed for board approval. So the only thing that will be brought forth will be what you, everything that's, um, struck through, we will remove.
So essentially what we'll be looking at is what's in red?
Well, I, no, sir. Everything that's in black, but everything that's in bold and in the brackets and everything that's struck through will be removed for the board to approve that policy.
Okay.
Yeah, so the committee just needed to look at the policy, the options that were there. So the board will only receive the, uh, option two, uh, of homeschool children.
Sir? Okay. Yeah.
Uh, quick question. I have just, now I just thought about this one. Um, I have a teacher who lives in Purnell, so I'm talking about the home, uh, the early college. They live in Purnell district where they work here. Will consideration be made if they do, if they do the policy the way it's written for employees to be able to, I mean, so they wouldn't have to go back to Purnell's district or Lompton's district if they work at a school?
Mr. S, that is one of the perks for our employees is that they can, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure because I, I gotta ask that question.
Mr. Gentry? Yes, sir. Um, Bobby, let me make sure I understand now. I know when the transfer, transfer is, we're gonna deal with that. That's been taken care of. Kids move, transferred to another school, that's fine. Now, when you said the word after August is bona fide, if there's a physical move, they could transfer then to another school?
Yes, they can, they will have a bona fide.
That's the bona fide part.
Yes.
Now, in August, after, if they haven't moved, they couldn't transfer again, which is what we've had in place.
Yes.
There's nothing written in here concerning that, is there?
No, but it would go back to our transfer policy.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure because that, that's what had been brought to me. And I understand what Mr. Vontae is saying, hey, my kid, grandkid, I'm gonna do everything I can to help that child. That's all of us feel that way. And, uh, but I just wanted to make this clear. And this also, we keep talking about high school. This is six through twelve.
That is correct.
This is gonna apply to middle school also. And that's part of the meeting Mr. Patterson was having with middle school A Ds.
Yes.
Okay, there has been a motion and a second that the committee accept this policy as presented, to be presented to the board for further consideration. Are there any further comments, questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Hearing none? Policy committee will accept this proposal as presented to be presented to the board. Folks, I don't know about y'all, but I, I need a restroom break. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take executive privilege here and, and order one or request one. Anybody else need to go, please?
Reconvene and I understand that the consensus is that we address, we hold our discussion in action to those sections that are in red. This point, I'll just do a nod ahead. Is everybody, is everybody in favor of that? Okay, all right, we'll do that. And the next one that I see, or the first one that we need to look at, is on Policy Code forty, forty, seventy-three, ten, page four, under Staff Student Relations. And the majority of that paragraph, you do need to read it to get the context, of course. But majority of it is stricken. And it has to do with misconduct. And the opening sentence says, "In accordance with Section F of Policy seventy-three, seventy-one thirty, licensure, any administrator shall report to state, to the State Board of Education, certain misconduct by licensed employees involving a student." And for the context, I will briefly just read the rest. "Including the superintendent, a deputy, associate assistant superintendent, or personnel administrator, or principal who knows the reason, who knows and has reason to believe, or has actual notice of a complaint that a licensed employee has engaged in misconduct, shall report the misconduct to the State Board of Education five days, within five days of dismissal, determination of disciplinary notion or acquaintance of resignation, or acceptance of resignation. If employee resigns, then thirty days of a complaint from misconduct or during, or during an ongoing investigation of complaint, misconduct is presumed to have resulted in the resignation. Purpose for this section, misconduct is conduct that would justify automatic revocation of the employee's license pursuant, it gives a reference of the infliction of physical injury against a child or other than by accident or in self-defense. Failure to report misconduct is a felony and may result in the suspension or revocation of an administrator's license of the State Board of Education."
Chair?
Yes.
Policy forty-four, forty, seventy-three, ten. Item number four, page five. Looks like we're crossing out most of that section that's in red. Make a motion that we accept recommendations policy.
Okay, all right. I moved in second that we accept that part of the policy that is still unstricken. Page four, forty, forty, seventy-three, ten. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. According to my book here, that brings us over to, I know there are a couple of minor references in red, but as far as something that is a substance. Concussion and head injury, seventy, forty-two, seventy, slash sixty-one, forty-five.
Mr. Chair, yeah, back up to forty-two, forty. Child abuse and related threats.
Yeah, page three.
Okay.
What's the distinction between the blue and the red, Mr. Bobby? As far as highlighted.
I've asked McKenna that and there's really no distinction between the two. I just think he was updated to that policy at that particular time.
Okay. So my interpretation is that we should be on forty-two, forty, slash seventy-three, ten, seventy-three, twelve, through a five, letter D?
Yes.
Board of Education. Okay, and that's, that's simply replacing Superintendent Public Instruction.
Word smooth.
Yeah.
Board of Education, yes, a word smooth thing. Any comments, questions?
Make a motion, we'll accept policies forty-two, forty, seventy-three, twelve, as recommended.
With the addition. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. That then brings us to concussion, head injury, forty-two, seventy, slash sixty-one, forty-five. And of course, it addresses concussions. Other head injuries may be serious potential life-threatening, and if such injuries may result in serious consequences later in life management. Properly, the board has committed practices that reduce potential of short-term or long-term effects from such injuries. For this commitment, the board directs school employees to comply with concussion safety rules in place of requirements for inner athletic competition adopted by the State Board of Education as required.
Mr. Chair, general statutes is updated here and that's pretty much what it's, this policy is regarding the changes, suggested changes. I moved that we will accept Policy forty-two, seventy, sixty-one, forty-five. With recommendations.
Your second? You're here second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There are some reference, general statute reference changes on forty-two, set forty-two, seventy, sixty-one, forty-five, two of three. There are three, four, five, six, seven, eight editorial changes. And again, in terms of general statute references are, and there is a wording change in the statement under G record. Keeping records shall include accounts of any educational training that may be required by state law, Board of Education policy, or rules. And the same phrase is applied in letter E, emergency action plans. It just includes policy or rules to extend that. And while we're, while we're there, move on over to three of three. Same kind of situation. There are some stricken references as in Article thirty-four, Chapter ninety, oh-two, oh-five, and ATHL double zero. And then there is a website addition or change. One is stricken and one is added, and then the word date, the final word on that page. If we consider those in total, do I hear a motion that we accept the changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the next policy, and we've tossed this around a couple of times or had brief conversation about it, and that's the emergency administration. I'm gonna call it Narcan. So the School Board Association did submit this policy as optional. It is not required. So that's why we put it at the top for your information only. So we've had conversations surrounding this county. And at this point in time, Ms. Freeman and Ms. Newman will address where we're currently at with this policy. We're not asking that the board adopt this policy. We're just asking at this point in time for you to review. And then again, we'll receive an update from Ms. Freeman and Ms. Newman in relations to our next steps here.
I do believe that we live in a district where we do need the Narcan in our schools. But at this time, there's just so much planning that will be involved in getting everything together. Proper trainings would have to be taken by my nursing staff in order to be able to train the trainer, so to speak. Those would be involved in very intense trainings. I would ask that they have more than like a thirty-minute or an hour training. Simply because we would be training what we in the medical field call laypeople that would be assisting us in giving this medication. And just very intense trainers that would come annually with the staff that would be on this Narcan team. There are, again, there's just a lot of preparation. And I've been reaching out to some of the surrounding counties. And I think that some of those counties have been in an actual planning phase since two thousand seventeen and are still in the planning phase of implementing that in their district. So with that would come, again, a lot of planning and a lot of training in order to get this. We do have access to Narcan on each campus through the SROs. So there is an available product on the campus for the children's safety. So at this time, we are just gonna be telling the staff to know your SROs, know where that supply is, where it's housed on your school campus. And we'd lean heavily on the SROs to help with that administration as well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Newman? Um, the, how, how much of a, how much of a detailed training process we talking about to get Narcan trained?
We first have to, we have, we have to set parameters of who would be, who this medicine would be administered to. Then you would have to know the symptoms that, that the child or the student or the person is exhibiting in order to get that. Now, if you, and Narcan is an opioid antidote, so it doesn't work on every situation. And I think a lot of people have that mindset that it doesn't matter what they've taken, Narcan will reverse those effects, but it does not. It only affects, it only reverses the opioid effect. So say you had a child that drank a bottle of cough medicine that was, had codeine in it before they came to school. Hours later, they start exhibiting symptoms, Narcan will not reverse that effect. Or if they have had a combination of drugs that included opioids or benzos together, which are uppers and lowers, uppers and downers, giving the Narcan would be effective, but it would only reverse that effect of some of the medications. So you give those medications and, and then it's only a short-acting medication. In thirty minutes to forty-five minutes later, that narcotic effect could actually potentiate again. And the risk of overdose should, could start all back over. Because the life, the, what we call half-life of Narcan, which is the time that it lasts, is only anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes, depending on the person's metabolism, right, of course. But you just, there's just so many unforeseen things that could happen. And I think the biggest one is people think that this medication just reverses everything. So you don't know what that, you have, you wouldn't be in the know what the child has taken. The other thing is that you could potentially, if I said, let's implement this and put two kits of Narcan per school, you could potentially wipe out half of your stock on one person. Because it holds two four-milligram doses of medicine in each kit, and you can give up to do two doses per one person. If the, if the narcotic effect is not being reversed, you could give that second dose. So then you'd be left essentially with half your stock gone in one incident. So the signs and symptoms, this intensive training to make sure, and this would, in my mind, it would be, have to be people that were passionately invested in, this is something that I really wanna do. This is something that I really wanna take stock in to make sure that you're understanding what happens when you give that medicine. Because once you give that medicine and it starts to reverse, if they've actually had an opioid and it starts to reverse that effect, they're gonna be, the person's gonna become aggressive. They're gonna start to fight. They could potentially get nauseous and start throwing up. That person would have to know automatically to turn them on their side so they don't aspirate. And then that would lead into a whole nother medical issue. So there's a lot of training that is gonna come into play.
You made mention that Narcan was in possession of the SRO. Is the SRO trained and is he licensed to administer to our students?
Yes, sir. They are trained to do that. From what I'm understanding from the SROs, they are cautioned. When to give it, of course, they know if there's an incident that emergency management is, or EMS is called first and initially to get them en route to the school. But they do have that training if they do potentially come upon an accidental overdose. And they are able to administer that, yes, sir.
What recommendations would you have for our board?
Um, at this time, I would consider it to stay optional at this time. Again, with leaning heavily on the SROs. But I do think that that is something that would be a benefit to our, to our district, considering the district that we're in. But again, I would, I would like to have that extensive training for our nursing staff. But I do think it's a necessity.
Jan, may I ask a question? To your knowledge, excuse me, no LEA, a public school unit, has mandated that we do this at this point across the state, correct?
No, sir. I've researched and I did a band even as far as South Carolina, and no surrounding districts have that implemented. Sampson County and Moore County are in the planning phases, but no other district has that implemented in their county.
And one of the pieces that I would like to add is Jan and I have had extensive conversations. We've looked at the data for our district. We think that is a very important piece of the information. She and I just looked at the district in terms of how it looks in North Carolina. We are one of the hot districts. If you look at it, you will see that we are one of the surrounding districts that actually has lots of ER visits to the hospital for overdose. We all recognize that, and we're very well aware of that. But again, our point is at this time, there is a lot of an awareness that needs to take place. The one thing that she said, if a person aspirates, that's a whole nother set of medical conditions that we have to go into and look at. And so we wanna just make sure that our staff is very prepared. But we also wanna give and ensure the safety of our students and our staff on campuses by letting you know, again, as, as Jan has said, that the SROs are fully trained and are aware of how to administer. So we're not without support. We're with support, but we're looking at a policy later on that would extend, expand that support. And I think that is where we reside, and we feel safe with those recommendations to you at this time.
I guess my concern too is, is we sharing SROs with some schools because of student population. So that's gonna put us in a situation where we may or may not have Narcan available. Am I right?
Yes, sir, and we've looked at that as well. I think Bobby will address that as well, because we've had that conversation, because we recognize there is a feeder pattern. And so Bobby, I'll yield to you at this time.
So, so what we have tried to do, SROs that are located, that we have at St. Paul's, within town limit, St. Paul's, Lomerton, and Red Springs, all of those schools, except for Lomerton Elementary Schools, have a full-time SRO on campus. All of our high schools that employ SROs through the Sheriff's Department have at least two, if not three, SROs on campus or assigned to them. All other campuses share SROs, but those SROs are located or, or assigned based on proximity. So the SRO that's at Pembroke Elementary is also at Union Chapel. SRO at Deep Branch is also at the Career Center. So we have tried to place those SROs. So if there is a situation, it's only a matter of minutes before they're leaving school A to get, or school number one to get to school number two.
Like Jan, great.
Real quick, and Mr. Bobby knows, he and I've had this conversation quite a bit about the Narcan. about the Narcan. And ladies, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with the training. But I'm gonna throw this one out. And we can't predict the future. But with those SROs, Mr. Bobby, they can administer the Narcan. They're the only people right now that we've got on campus that can.
They can.
They can. And, and, you know, just talking to Mr. John here, he said in the years, you know, he never did. Hopefully, we don't want to get in a situation where somebody needs it and that their sorrow is not there. But, and then they gotta get there. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. So I'm saying all that to just say, whatever training we can start doing or looking at, and you ladies say you are doing that now, and it's not something that can be done in a month. It takes a long time to do it. So to me, whatever we can do, because folks, you, we read the stats. Robinson County is bad for defending off the drug. It's just, it's just one of the bad places. And the bad drugs, all of them bad, but the bad drugs are here. And these kids are taking this stuff, and they don't know what they're taking. They don't know the strength they're taking. And so, you know, whatever y'all can be doing to get this where we can have it on campuses, for me, and I know it's a lot of training, a lot of responsibility, but we need to look at it. And I'm thankful that SROs are there and can use it if needed. And, and like you said, Mr. Bobby, y'all got them set up where they can get somewhere very quickly. And, and I appreciate that, too. And, and I'll get off this soapbox real quick, because it's not on here. But the other one I think we, we're gonna have to look at some way is the vaping. And the more I, the more I talk to principals and stuff, it's a whole different territory. But that is becoming a major problem on campuses. And I'll be quiet.
Mr. Craig, if I could reiterate as well to the policy committee, I share your same sentiments. I think, I know when we met previously to discuss this information, we all share your same sentiments, because we did look at the data. And we are very, very aware that it is extensive in this district. One of the things I want to ensure to the policy committee, as well as to board members, is that as we move forward, we will definitely take a strong look at the professional development opportunities that will be required. We realize, most importantly, for me, the most important piece for me, as I've studied the information, is making sure that we have our staff very aware of the mindset and the symptoms that actually, able to actually recognize those symptoms. That's gonna be key. And then able to respond quickly to the needs of those students. So those are just big pieces as we make our decisions moving forward that we'll consider very, very heavily. But again, we have been in consultation with the nurses. Jen and I have talked several times. She knows that we have even text numerous, we have almost text messages as long as emails or longer, where we're actually off-site, actually having these conversations. So they're very meaningful to us. And we definitely have in heartfelt expressions of making sure that we keep our students safe as well.
Any further questions?
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Terry.
So nurses aren't able to administer Narcan at this time? School nurses?
Because we're nurses in an educational setting, our license, we have to have that additional training. If we were in the hospital, of course, we would be able to give it with no problem. But because we're nurses in an education setting, and I have to be very mindful of that coming from the hospital after thirty years, to shift my mindset into you're not there, you don't have those added resources that you would have in the hospital around you. So that, to answer your question though, sir, we have to have that additional training in order to be able to administer it.
Would it, would the training be much more than the school resource officers had?
Um, there, now, I did talk to Patrick Cummings, who is over the EMS department, and he said that he could help me train my nursing staff. The only problem that I have with that is that he's training people every day that are medically inclined, that know these extra signs and symptoms to look for. We are gonna be training people who have no medical background at all to help us in our absence, whether we're at our other school or out sick or whatever.
I'm just talking about the nurses.
Oh, the nurses. Um, I don't know, I honestly don't know the comparison between the training that the SROs get and the nursing staff gets at this time.
Also, to reiterate, we want to be mindful that we have to recognize also that we don't have a, we don't have full-time nurses at every site. So we have to be aware that we also have to have a first responders team. And so that doesn't extend, that extends itself beyond the medical profession. It extends itself to the first responders. And that is going to require, as we always do with all first responders, making sure that they have that knowledge. We are moving forward in that direction. We do see the urgency of it. But again, we feel at this time, you will have your SROs secure to actually administer the Narcan if necessary, as well as moving forward. But we have conversation ongoing, and we'll continue to have these conversations. And I would share to say that we will also provide an update as we move forward this year, Dr. Williamson, in the upcoming academic year, on how we're progressing with that next step.
Just as a follow-up, the, what was being said, Mr. Bobby and Ms. Newman, could, instead of looking at these other people, could we just get some numbers did, if, okay, if all our SRO officers have this training, and we train nobody but nurses, not bringing in outside people. If we got our nurses trained and our SRO people, how close then would we be to having full coverage all the time at a school? Would that leave us one or two or three schools? You know, I'm not saying answer that now. If we could just get some feedback on how close would that be to having all schools covered most of the time, or ninety percent of the time, if just our nurses, where we're not bringing in these outside people that have no medical training at all. And then you got DM and you got a resource officer and see what that would give us.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, Jennifer, and everyone who asked questions. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would like to ask that we table Policy fifty-two-three-sixty-one-twenty-eight-seventy-two-sixty-eight until we get further licensed personnel to manage the process.
Second?
Yeah.
No. Yeah, this was, this was just optional. So yeah, that's why, yeah.
This does not require a motion.
No, this is not a required.
That's why we're tabling it.
Uh, no, the rest of these will require action. There are, there may be some, there are either legal references or just some wording that needs to take place based on updated general statutes and/or school board policies.
And the, and the next one coming up, as I see it, is under licensure thirty-seven-one-thirty. On the right page?
No, electronically stored information retention fifty-seventy-one. And again, that's just legal references.
Yeah, your general statutes updates. Seventh, second. Second, that motion.
And that, what was that number again, please?
Fifty-seventy-one. Seventy-three fifty-one.
Okay, got you. Yeah. Okay, it's, yeah, so editorial change, with a website change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed no.
And also, Chair, on for the next one administering medicine to students, that is an update just to the naming of the department. So it is changed to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. That is required in other resources. Other than that, there's no change to that policy. And we haven't encountered any problems with that process.
I make a motion with accept Policy sixty-one twenty-five recommended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed no. Okay. Well, then now, looks like we are at page seventy-one or seventy-one thirty as a part of the licensure section.
Yes. And, Miss Chair, that, that section that changes on page three or four, reporting misconduct, this refers back to a previous policy as well. But also, that is recommended based on general statutes of reporting misconduct by licensed employees. And Mr. Campbell's department would handle that.
I make a motion with set, uh, policy upgrade seventy-one thirty.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed no. Motion carries. Particular policy is accepted. The next one that I see is a reference, legal ref, under legal references, page four-four, under seventy-one thirty. There are three reference changes that are now in red, referred to in red. Two-seventy-point thirty-five, three-twenty-six-point twenty-sixteen, N C A C, sixty, zero-six-zero-four-zero-six-zero-eight. Do I hear a motion that we accept those editorial changes?
We did.
Yeah, that, yes, that's part of the.
We did that one?
Yes, yeah.
Eighty-three forty, the statement, the board will maintain insurance or other liability coverage adequate to safeguard the school systems, property, and assets.
Second. You good to go?
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed no. Motion carries. A, school finance officer, eighty-five-ten.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, this policy is being updated based on an update to the State Board of Education policy. And it's also, an additional section has been added concerning professional education. And we've shared this both with Dr. Williamson and Ms. Erica.
Yeah, we're talking about Erica, right?
Yes.
Right.
Mr. Chair, it looks like quite a bit of changes here. And this is state recommended?
Yes, sir.
Based upon an update to the state board policy of finance, state board policy. Okay, to stay within state board policy of finances, I'd like to make a motion with accept eighty-five-ten as suggested.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed no.
I think.
That looks like it.
That's the last one. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else to come up for the good of the policy, policy committee?
I just have a quick comment, Mr. Gentry.
Yes, sir.
So we're coming up on graduation season. I've had a couple of phone calls about the, our policy, I guess it's thirty-four fifty, and it discusses graduation exercises. And it, within our policy, there's a statement that says altering the traditional graduation regalia, including caps or stalls will not be allowed. So I just want to make sure that people know that, that that does not include, that, that policy is not going to stand in place or prohibit individuals from, American Indian students from, from wearing their, their feathers. Because, you know, by that being North Carolina law, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So, because I've had a couple of phone calls about that.
All right. Thank you, Terry.
But I, I do have a question concerning it, too. Can or cannot students modify their hair? Okay, no.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Brewer, but to add to that, so that Jadael and her department has sent out to all principals and counselors, and have been shared with graduating students to graduation procedures. And within those procedures, they align with our policy, but also kind of give do's and don'ts of what students are allowed to do to their regalia, capping gown, and what they're not allowed to do. And those procedures fall in line with the general statute that was approved or passed last year in terms of students being allowed to wear feathers. Yes, and, and so Ms. Jessica just informed me as well that it's on our, our website on for graduation procedures or guidelines.
Good job.
So the only modification is Indian students can wear feathers.
Yes. And again, that follows in line with the general statute that was passed last year.
Thank you. Anything else to come up before the good of the public schools of Robinson County at this point? Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Make such motion.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.